Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Mid Valley Highway Environmental Assessment online meeting. We'll get started in just a couple of minutes. I'm just watching as our attendees start to hop in and and get settled here for the meeting. So we'll give everybody a few minutes before we get started into our content. Thanks so much for joining us. Okay, it looks like we've got most people online. We'll go ahead and get started. Again, welcome everyone and thank you for being here with us tonight. We are here to discuss the recently published Mid Valley Highway Environmental Assessment and the preferred alternative for the next segment of Mid Valley Highway, which would connect the road from where it currently ends at SR 138 south to SR 36. So we're going to start tonight with a presentation from our environmental team, followed by a question and answer session. You can submit your questions at any point throughout the presentation or during the Q and A. And all that you'll do is use that Q and A button at the bottom of your screen there that you'll see on your Zoom screen. And you can submit the question at any point, like I mentioned, you'll be able to see what questions other people are asking. And if there's something that you agree with, or that you would also like to hear the answer to, go ahead and give it a thumbs up there. The thumbs up underneath the question pushes that up to the top. I'll start at the top with the most popular and relevant questions during the Q and A. We'll get to that. If you have any technical difficulties with Zoom at any point throughout the process, please feel free to chat that into the Q and A or to give us a call on our hotline. Our hotline and email are available at the bottom of the screen and will be throughout the presentation. And we encourage you, if you know you have questions you think of after tonight, please feel free to reach out and to give us a call. Like I mentioned, tonight, we will be having a presentation led by our environmental study team. We have with us Juan Lee Sbradlin, our UDOT project manager. We also have Naomi Keeson, the UDOT Environmental Program Manager. Jeremy Gilbert is also with us. Jeremy is the UDOT pre-construction engineer for Region Two and was the design lead for this project. And finally, Nicole Tolly is on our presentation panel, representing the consultant environmental team as a project manager. So really, our objective here tonight is to share with you the findings of the environmental study and share details surrounding the preferred alternative or that alignment of the new road. We'll be discussing, you know, the study results at a fairly broad level in this venue. We encourage you, if you have specific questions maybe about your property or details that are really kind of specific to your individual kind of property, please feel free to reach out to us through email or phone so that we can set up a time to talk with you. This is kind of a venue that's a little bit harder to have some of those more detailed one-on-one conversations, but we absolutely want to make sure that we have those with you if you're interested. We also have a public hearing in-person opportunity this Thursday from six to seven thirty PM. That's at the Twilla City Police Department in the community room right there as you walk into the left. And all of our team members will be there and available to talk with you one-on-one, answer any more detailed questions that you have that may not be able to be totally addressed tonight. So we encourage you to participate in that or reach out to us otherwise. For now, though, we are going to get started with the presentation tonight. Starting with some background about Mid Valley Highway and the effort giving some context to what we're doing and what we're talking about here. So I'll turn it over to Juan, our UDOT project manager.
Hello, everyone. Um, so I'm here to talk about the history of Mid Valley Highway. It's a long time coming corridor for the Twilla County Valley. So the department, the Utah Department of Transportation completed an environmental impact statement, or EIS, in 2011. The EIS evaluated a new corridor for the county to connect from I-80 to State Route 36 south in Twilla County, south of Twilla City. This corridor is known as Mid Valley Highway or State Route 179. So the original EIS was completed in 2011 and we, since then, we completed Phase One, which is the segment between I-80 and SR 138. And construction was completed in 2021. This, it's a single lane in each direction, but it's future compatible for two lanes in each direction and can be scaled as the, as future capacity needs and funding are identified. So now we move on to this, the, why we're doing the environmental assessment for this phase of the study of the road. So since we've completed the EIS, a lot has changed. More than 10 years has passed and there's been a lot of development in the area and the need, we needed to take a look at it for, to update environmental and community impacts. And as such, we looked at alternative alignment or builder no build condition. While the original EIS identified an alignment for the second segment, we needed to address these issues again in such as the UNEP pipeline. With that, next slide, we started the environmental assessment in spring of 2022. We conducted a public scoping and went through and developed and screened alternatives. In summer of 22, we, we analyzed the resources impacted and it's taken us a while, but here we are at the recommended alignment. And we hope to finish this environmental assessment in late fall or late this year. And with that, oh, one more thing, the funding. So this is only for the environmental assessment. And once it's a complete, we currently do not have funding for active design or construction for the next phase. So with that, I will turn over to Naomi. You will explain further about the environmental process.
Thanks, Juan. So as Juan said, I'm going to go a little more into the details on what the environmental assessment process involves. We keep talking about this environmental assessment. So what is it? It's a pretty much a prescriptive process that we have to follow because the project could have federal funding. And, and because the original project was an environmental impact statement, which is a federal document. So the, one of the very first things that we do in this environmental process is we establish what the purpose and need for the project is. And what that means is first, we look at the need. So what is the problem that we're trying to solve here? And if you look at the slide that's in front of you, you can see we've kind of identified these four high-level needs for high-level problems that there's kind of not enough regional connection in the Twilla Valley that both now and projected in the future, conditions along SR 36 fail. And then also that there's a lot of planned development of various types and that the public doesn't have access to a high-capacity roadway. So those are kind of the needs, like what are we trying to, to, to fix? And the purpose is, is how we want to go about accomplishing solving this problem. And so that would be improving the regional connectivity, reducing the existing and the future congestion, providing better access to planned development and improving public safety by providing another high-capacity alternative to SR 36. So that's kind of the basis for and the guide for moving forward in the development of concepts for this project. So the concepts are kind of high-level ideas of how we might go about solving this problem, different alignments that we then further develop and potentially move on to be our alternatives for the study. In developing those concepts, we look at not only how they perform in terms of those purposes that we just referenced, improving the original ability, reducing congestion and providing access and improving public safety, but we also look at the impacts that the different alternative concepts would have on facets of the natural and built environment. And there's a very broad list of what that could include for this project. The kind of factors that we looked at because of the potential for effects. So we look at them when we feel like the potential for effects is, is, is there. And so the things that we looked at are cultural resources. So that in this case, you know, it includes historic resources. So historic buildings, historic rail lines, that type of thing. It can also include archaeological resources. We looked at something called Section 4F properties, and that is something that's specific to projects that are done under the US Department of Transportation. So since we are a transportation agency and we use federal funding that comes from the Federal Highway Administration, we're subject to Section 4F. And that basically means that if we're looking at providing a solution to kind of fix these problems, then that solution needs, if it can, if there's an alternative to impacting a protected cultural site, a recreational area that's open to the public or a wildlife refuge, then we have to pick that, that different alternative. If we have another one, if we have another alternative that accomplishes our purpose and need, but doesn't affect those properties. Other things we looked at were wetlands and waters of the US. So where and how many wetlands and waters of the US, which are essentially jurisdictional streams, would be impacted by the different concepts that we were considering. We also looked at, in this particular case, conflicts with the UNEP pipeline for, for various reasons, from the really straightforward one of it's just expensive to impact the pipeline because we'd have to move it to kind of the more regulatory aspect that if we needed the pipeline to move, that would trigger the pipeline's own NEPA process, which we, we couldn't do. We couldn't require them to go through their own NEPA process to, you know, move so that we could build our road. And then we also looked at existing land use and planned land use, both for residential and commercial development. And then we looked at geotechnical and soil conditions from a constructability standpoint. I'm going to pass it off to Nicole to kind of go over the next steps in the EA process.
Thanks, Naomi. So the study team considered four concepts. And we developed these concept alignments based on meeting the purpose and need that Naomi discussed, as well as public feedback and as well as looking at the environmental resources that Naomi discussed. So the first one, the alignment shown in yellow, was the alignment evaluated in the original environmental impact statement. And this alignment was not carried forward for further study because of high impacts to the UNEP pipeline, as well as impacts to planned residential and commercial development in the area. The second alignment, the one shown here in green, is the one further to the east. And this alignment was not carried forward because of impacts to the UNEP pipeline, as well as to the Twilla landfill, which had some tricky geotechnical considerations. The third alignment in purple was a modification to that second alignment. It shifts east at the southern end. And this alignment was the concept that we've identified to move forward for further study because it avoided most impacts to the UNEP pipeline. It avoided the landfill and it avoided impacts to other resources. And then finally, we looked at this fourth alignment, which is shown in red. And this alignment was developed based on feedback that we received from the public, and it evaluated utilizing sheep lane corridor. However, this alignment had impacts to those Section 4F properties that Naomi discussed, had impacts to historic structure. It had high impacts to the UNEP pipeline. It impacted the Utah Motorsports Campus and the Desert Peak Complex. And then it also had impacts to plant development. So this alternative was eliminated from further consideration. So you can see here, the third alignment was identified as the preferred alternative. This met the purpose and need for the project and it minimizes impacts and it was moved forward for detailed study in the environmental assessment. So the environmental assessment documents the impacts associated with that preferred alternative, as well as mitigation for those impacts. So first, we have a right-of-way and relocations. The preferred alternative require one commercial relocation, a Haasentara feed, and the acquisition of approximately 225 acres from 74 parcels. So UDOT will follow the uniform relocation assistance and real property acquisition policies to acquire property and provide relocation assistance. We also evaluated noise and based on the noise analysis, the preferred alternative would cause 177 noise impacts to mostly residences in the study area. So UDOT defines a noise impact as either 66 decibels or greater for residences or an increase of 10 decibels over the existing conditions. The study team evaluated five noise walls. However, these noise walls did not meet the criteria outlined in UDOT's noise abatement policy, and they will not be constructed as part of the preferred alternative. So for additional information on the noise analysis, a noise report is provided in the appendix of the environmental assessment. The preferred alternative would impact just over a tenth of an acre of wetlands at the northern end of the study area. And it is anticipated that we will obtain a Section 404 permit from the US Army Corps of Engineers to address those impacts. It also impacts just over an acre of floodplains. And UDOT will work with the Federal Emergency Management Agency to revise the current flood maps to show the floodplain changes. The preferred alternative would remove some migratory bird habitat and then would construct a new road within a mapped wildlife migration corridor at the southern end of the project. So mitigation would include removing that vegetation outside of the nesting window. And if that's not possible, UDOT will conduct nest surveys. For the wildlife corridor, we'll continue to evaluate solutions during final design. But some of those solutions could include wildlife fencing as well as cattle guards, but that will be worked out during the final design phase. And then finally, farmland, the preferred alternative would impact those statewide important farmland and an agricultural protection area. And UDOT will work with the advisory board and the commissioner of agriculture and food to address that impact. Then I'll go ahead and turn the time over to Juan to talk more about the preferred alternatives.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. So I'll give a brief overview of of the preferred alternative and Jeremy will provide more details in subsequent slides with regards to the alignment. So here we see the preferred alignment from SR 138, the where the existing Phase One ends Mid Valley Highway ends. We will tie into that, that interchange, sorry, that intersection and as, as it currently stands, will be a interchange. And the highway will look similar to what it currently looks like in Phase One. As you see, a four-lane gray separated freeway. That is the future full width projection of what is needed, but whenever we move to the actual because design and construction year, we will build and to what funding we can get and the need at the time. So with that, and the, so we proceed south and we will, so it may be a one lane or two lane each direction, depending on the funding we receive and the year that it's built and the traffic condition at that time. So proceeding south over Erdaway, we will have a overpass there. There will not be ramps there. Thirty, we anticipate tying into a projected local road extension of 33rd Parkway. And when that comes through, a an interchange can be assessed environmentally to tie into Mid Valley Highway. And the same can be said at 2000 North. Proceeding, so from 2000 North to 1,000 North, SR 112, we will begin to change our configuration from a four-lane gray separated freeway to a four-lane arterial similar to that of SR 36 that you see today. So it'll be lower speed and it will be projected to be four lanes, you know, maximum. But again, we, when the time comes and funding is procured, we will design and construct if it's, if we proceed with with the preferred alignment with the actual need of the of the traffic at that time. So that means that we will have signalized intersection or stop at at logical points to tie into the local streets and meet south into SR 36. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jeremy and he can talk further about the.
Juan, before we do that, did you want to mention the shared use path along the Atlantic?
Yes, I forgot about that. Sorry. As you, yes, as part of the purpose and need, we are considering, as part of the cross-section, a 12-foot shared use path with the corridor. And as funding, and that is to be integrated and tied into existing community plans for trails. Thank you for reminding me.
Thank you, Juan. And I'll, I'll tie, you know, a little bit more into that, the intent of putting it in the environmental document is to have that trail connection, connectivity, if familiar with how legacy highway looks. Where the, the road on each side, you know, the main freeway, but there's a trail connected connection right there. So that, that's the, the goal and the intent for having that shown on here. But I'll go in and discuss kind of the, the details that we had there. We looked at these two sections, these two types of freeways to meet the goals of, of the environmental report, getting the regional connection, an alternative to SR 36. So the, the design we, we looked at was to pull further to, as the existing Mid Valley Highway comes to SR 138, or to change where it comes down and meets and put a full interchange with on and off ramps. And then proceed south along the, the western side of the Twilla Valley Airport. And then as Juan mentioned, a, just a bridge over Erdaway, there'd be no ramps at that location. Continuing south, Juan identified the two possible locations as, as further regional connections and plans developed for connections to Mid Valley Highway. Those would be in this section, full interchanges with on and off ramps, containing south until it bends further to the east and connect down to SR 112, where we would change back to that arterial style road, which would be more similar to SR 36 than the existing Mid Valley Highway. So it changed from having these grades separated on off ramps to signalize intersections, control that, you know, limited access to, to make sure that we're getting the, the community through there and having that, you know, preferred alternative to SR 36. Containing south from SR 112, they're just sneak through there, go on, and then there'd be some challenge or some design modifications of Utah Avenue to get that to work because the, the plan is to have a overpass over the Union Pacific Railroad line. And they're just to make all the, the bridge construction and the the road works through there, there'd be some changes to the Utah Avenue. But the Utah Avenue and Mid Valley Highway would be planned to have a signal at that location. And as it continues through the west side of Twilla, between the Army Depot and Twilla, it used some existing roadways to to push down through there, continue with this limited access, verify where, where we want the, the roads to connect and the regional plans as they come in to make sure there's lots of connections, lots of opportunities for, for people to get onto the Mid Valley Highway. And then that finally would connect down to SR 36 through the depot land and provide that final terminus of, of the road.
Thanks, Jeremy. Juan, do you want to talk a little bit about what will come next after this point?
Hi. Oh, yes. So what will come up next after this point is we receive public comments and and then respond to those comments. And if there are no significant issues, UDOT will issue a decision document on whether to proceed with the recommended alignment or no build. And so if, if a build alternative is recommended, UDOT and the local communities can assess opportunities for corridor preservation and then also work together to acquire or seek out possible funding sources and acquire funding for potentially in phases.
Thank you for that. Oh, something else, Juan, to add?
Oh, no, that's, that's it.
Okay, appreciate it. Thanks for that detailed information, everybody. Juan mentioned something that I wanted to tack on to a little bit is the formal public comment period. We are in that comment period right now. It started on September 10th with the release of the document. And we are accepting formal comments through October 10th. And you can provide comments via the project website listed here. You can send us an email at midvalley@utah.gov. You can also participate in our in-person meeting to provide a formal comment this Thursday, six to seven thirty PM at 12:30. Six to seven thirty PM at Twilla City Police Department. And you can mail comments into us as well at the address on the screen. The questions and statements made here tonight through the Q and A feature are not considered formal comments. But are more kind of an educational process for us as we try to encourage that you do provide a comment in one of those formal channels. So please do that. And it's a really important piece of the process and something that hopefully through all these different options can give you a, a good, easy way to provide feedback that will be addressed and considered in the final document. Let's see, with that, I think we're ready to move on to our question and answer portion. And again, any questions that you have can be submitted through the Q and A button there at the bottom of your screen. I see that a couple are coming through here already, which is great. And we have some questions as well that might start some conversation and spark some thoughts from you guys to answer, to ask more things, questions that we've heard through our hotline, through our email in conversations with people that we can provide input on as well as we're waiting for more questions to come in. So feel free to use that tool. We have a whole panel of subject matter experts on the line. Those that you've heard from just now in the presentation, in addition to others representing overall planning for UDOT as well as traffic and right of way. So we'll go ahead and get started. We're planning to wrap up right at seven o'clock. I'll keep an eye on the time. If great questions are still coming in, we want to, of course, answer as many as we can before we leave here tonight. So we'll kind of manage that and see where things go as far as the ending of the meeting, but we're currently planning to wrap up in about thirty minutes. So the first question that I want to ask to our team here today, let me just pull my screen over here real quick. From Kendall Thomas, Kendall asked, and this one, Juan, I'm hoping you can tackle. Kendall said, I thought that the funding for the design for the next phase was already approved. If there's no funding for the design, what is the timeline to secure it?
Great question. Currently, we have no funding to proceed with design and construction. The project is on the unfunded phase of the step. So what, but we did, the commission, our transportation commission did approve five hundred thousand dollars for us to proceed with a long lead item of procuring a land easement going through the Twilla Army Depot, because that process takes up to three years. And there, and basically, it's, it's a way for us to actually complete this environmental document as we had to identify a partial funding phase to be able to to complete this EA. So during those three years and even beyond as long we, I believe the local jurisdictions and champions and UDOT. We can look at ways to move this project up in priority in a, into a funded phase. But currently I cannot, I do not know the projection of when that will be.
Thank you, Juan. I think probably good advice to stay in touch with UDOT and its plans as things move forward if anything changes. Of course, the community would be early to hear about that on any future movement of the project.
I advise that the local jurisdictions continue to advocate and, and work to move the priorities up. As it's important to your community and us.
Perfect. Thank you, Juan. We've got some little bit of a comment and a couple of questions from Taylor Johnson. Thank you, Taylor. I'm going to have Jeremy start us off here with maybe your your second questions. Taylor asked Jeremy, what is the plan going across the railroad? Are you going to build a bridge?
Yeah, I, I think that's, I'm not sure when the comment came in, but the, the goal is right there around Utah Avenue. As we connect to the around the rail yards and the Adelie Freeway goes along that section, we're planning on going over. The rail lots have a grade separated, so if there's a train stop there, there'll be a a road that will go over that you won't need to stop at because the train is taking too long to get by. So that's, that was the goals, I plan to, to have that go over as well.
Perfect, thank you. And Taylor had another question, and I'm just catching up on the kind of subcomments to these questions. Give me one second. Jeremy, I don't know if you want to start with this one, and we might need others to weigh in, but Taylor's question is, you're going to build this highway at the bottom of neighborhood streets. What's the plan to prevent those neighborhood streets becoming thorough, becoming thoroughfares between Mid Valley and SR thirty six? And then he clarified, I'm referring to traffic buildup if there's a slow or stalled vehicle along with an accident.
Yeah, you bet. And, and I think this may answer maybe potentially Kathleen's question as well. So then we're talking, I think we're talking about the section of the road, which is right there at the southern end where it connects to SR thirty six between there and approximately Utah Avenue. So we, we looked at some of the, the impacts that we're going through there. So starting from the south end, the, the first impact that we had is with coordination with the, the Army Depot that they had some strong recommendations and, and plans that they have within their property through there on protected assets that they have that they would like us to minimize our conflict and our are the road through their, their property. And then as you come into the, what's shown in the middle of the screen there. They're, they're connected kind of like you're saying towards the, the back end of the, the, the community there. That's kind of, kind of we're talking about that this portion is that, that second cross section, that second look to Mid Valley won't be what, what's existing out there, the big freeway, the separated high speeds. We, we kind of put in the design, the initial thought that this would be a, a lower speed road around forty five miles per hour, controlled access at the signals. So it'd be a lot like SR thirty six. A little, little bit faster than like downtown Twilla, but still have your signals, have not a lot of high speed going through there. But you have connectivity through there. So the intent is to get people off of SR thirty six, off of getting down through Main Street. Those slow traffic that's going through there and, and Twilla has plans to revitalize the, the main street, the community to, to make it a, a more of a gateway, an entrance into the city, beautify it. And so we would need this alternative route to go around and with discussions to where that location is, right, where what best the recent cultural resources and the, the long range plans of the, the community of the city. I'm making sure that it's compatible with the, the expansion and development that they have. So hopefully that answers your question, right? It'll be, it won't be quite sixty five miles per hour, be a little lower speed. And it's, the purpose is to get people away from Main Street, to get them thoroughfired and around, around. As an alternative route from SR thirty six.
Thanks, Jeremy. Appreciate it. Got a question, and I'm hoping that Kim can help us with here. Kim, if you're on and available, the question is from Zach. I've noticed the potential proposed relocation of one business. How will that carry out? Negotiation only starts when the decision is made. Is that correct?
Yes. Relocation benefits can be paid once a project has been funded. And we will work with the property owners and go through the relocation process at that time. So that will be when a project has been funded.
Right, thank you, Kim. Jeremy, it looks like there's another design clarification from Nikki Mathis. Nikki asked, the intersection from Mid Valley to SR thirty six appears to be a potential high congestion problem. Will it be a signal intersection only or will the, will, will there be a high flow merge heading south?
Yeah, that will be, that's getting very much in the design specifics and it's a great question. We, we clear this as a connection point. The, the traffic modeling has gone through that the best, would be best served for free flow connection for, you know, southbound Mid Valley to go to southbound SR thirty six. We, we haven't got into those design details of exactly what that would look like to confirm that, but you know, we understand that, that looking at those models, those will provide the best connections and we do that. So it, the intent is some movements will be free, like southbound SR thirty six to get on to Mid Valley Highway, southbound Mid Valley to get on to southbound SR thirty six. There'll be some free movements, but it will, the plan is to have a signal that will control the other left turning movements and other things, but those are design specifics that will kind of be resolved once, you know, the most optimal movements and, and ability, once the design phase gets started on it.
Maybe, Jeremy, just a clarification for everybody. To what level do you typically put this design together for the environmental phase as opposed to this final design that you're talking about?
Yep, I work with our traffic modeler that we identify our intersection points, our assumed design speeds. And, and then look through like some of the movements that may be constrained or, or not, that would, you know, be constrained by stopping at a right turn. Or letting that be free flow. So we evaluated those. And, you know, our traffic modeler gave us recommendations. So we, we cleared more of the area if it needed to have that free right turn movement.
Ivan is our pathic engineer for this project.
Let's see.
I'm just, just going to time in, yeah, Jeremy's exactly right. We anticipated a free flowing movement to the southbound. From southbound Mid Valley to southbound SR thirty six and northbound would be controlled by a traffic signal, like it's like Jeremy mentioned.
This is something that might be good again for Ivan and Jeremy to tag team a little bit. There's been a question or a comment from Taylor and kind of a a follow-up from Craig Sanders with a concern about the need for overpasses versus lights. Bringing up Bangater Highway as an example where those are being changed, you know, into interchanges. Wondering, I think here, if you guys can talk to, was that looked at at each location here? What's kind of the, the driver, the impetus behind the signalized locations?
I, I can start with this. We're somewhat constrained by the that we're looking out to a twenty fifty horizon year. And we're somewhat constrained by the, the land use projections that are made for that horizon year that we don't have control over. That the state prepares those projections as far as how much growth is anticipated in the Twilla Valley. And based on those projections that we're using for our analysis. We're not showing sufficient demand on the corridor in twenty fifteen to justify having a freeway for the entire length. As we described at the north end, we are showing a freeway down to about SR one twelve and a thousand north. But we're not showing sufficient demand south of there. Therefore, the the quarter has been planned as an arterial as, as you've been described.
Thanks, Ivan. And one thing that has come up again, and Jeremy, I think you addressed it to start with, but a couple of questions have come in since then. Just that question about why not putting the highway farther west when you get into Twilla? From Marty as well as Kathleen, can we cover that piece one more time?
You bet. And I think the, the emphasis on this, right, it, it's lower speed. It's, it's two, two lanes in each direction, so it, it maybe not so familiar, familiar as like a Bangeter Highway or something like that, but it's it's becomes a, you know, a road network, becomes an, we call these arterial roads. What they do is they feed into smaller roads and local roads, but it becomes the, the main thoroughfare and, and the ability to build off of those and connect to have that there. And so with, you know, coordination that we've had with the the stakeholders out here, including Twilla City, there were some suggestions, recommendations to move this to provide this arterial in this location to provide the best connections for the future growth in that area. So, you know, it's, they're, they're, we looked at some opportunities to, to move further west and that was through development and community planning that it was actually recommended to move it to this eastern location.
Thanks, Jeremy. Appreciate it. A question came in, are there any future plans to bypass Stockton? Is that a question, Juan, that maybe you want to start with?
Sure, at this point, the scope of our project, we are only connecting to SR thirty six through this area. I am not familiar with any plans to bypass Stockton, so I, I don't know how to answer that other than no at this point.
Thank you, Juan.
Do you want me to jump in on that a little bit?
Oh, yes, Jeff.
I was just about to call again. You felt it coming, yeah.
Yeah, so for our long, the UDOT's long range plan is we work with Twilla, Twilla County and, and the municipalities within the, within the county. There currently no, no plans even thirty years out for, for any type of bypass around Stockton. That's something that we, what we do with the, with the, with the, the long range plan, it's, it's updated every, every four years. So that's something that as the valley continues to grow, we recognize that there that changes will need to be made or adjustments. And so what we'll do is, is, is we'll update that to reflect any, any future changes as, as we update the plan. But currently on the long range plan, and that, that's, that's a thirty year look. We haven't identified anything in, in that area around Stockton.
Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate that. A question from Jacob that I think I'll just kind of take care. Jacob asked, what is the estimated timeline for beginning of construction? We don't yet have a timeline for construction. Juan mentioned that the project has not been funded for final design or for construction at this point. And until that happens and some funding is assigned and allocated, we will not be able to give you an idea of when construction would start. So definitely stay in touch with UDOT with the Mid Valley project. And again, working with your local community to understand if if priorities and things like that are able to be made in terms of allocating funding through different resources, to get a better idea there. Okay, Zach asked, a decision will be made this fall. And maybe that's something, yeah, Juan, you want to talk about kind of our schedule from here on out for the study portion?
Yeah, sure. So we're in the public comment period for this final stage. After which we will address the comments and see the severity of it and see if there's anything we need to correct. And and UDOT will make a final decision to either proceed with the recommended prefer alternate alignment or no build. And after which, if it's a prefer, if we proceed with the preferred alignment. Then UDOT and local jurisdictions can work together on identifying or areas that might come up for corridor preservation. The local government normally notifies us of that. We don't actually go out and seek that. And we also will work together to seek potential funding sources and both the UDOT and the local jurisdictions and their champions can would do that, seek the, the funding sources and go apply for them. And hopefully that will move us up on, in priority and that's as far as I know for now.
Thank you, Juan. Another question for Jeremy, kind of similar to these alignment shifting questions from Steve. Steve said, I'm a business owner on twelve hundred West. I'm concerned about the amount of right of ways that will be required from the business owner. Steve said, I'm a business owner on twelve hundred West. I'm concerned about the amount of right of way that will be required from the business owners impacted on that street. Seems to me that routing the road closer to the railroad would cause less impact to existing businesses. Can you share some insight there as well?
Yeah, thank you for your question, Steve. Um, yeah, we did, you know, as this is in the study area. Um, that was one of our original slides that we had there. We we investigated looking at some different locations and alternatives. Uh, one of the the issues that we had, um, going behind the businesses there on twelve hundred West. Uh, with the the future plans of of potentially adding some tracks, um, as in some new lines, U P R are. Adding, um, some additional lines and within their property, there would still be impacts to those, um, properties. There, so it would it would be both taking from U P R and the properties. So it would potentially limit the impacts they're seeing from along the the road frontage. Um, but there is still additional impacts that would happen to U P R. So the we did, we did investigate and we did look at it. Um, you know, this is the environmental stage where we're just clearing the what we have through the optimal, there's. The opportunities to to understand what the the final design, what those actual impacts, the. You know, the number, what the the access to your your business and and different. Things, but tho- those will be designed and and figured out exactly later, but you are correct, there will be some. Cause it's a two lane road. And what we've shown in the the what the arterial is a three lane or five lane road. So it would require some winding, some changes to that road as it is out there.
I want to add, though, this is one that. Because this is an environmental. Uh, document clearance, we are clearing for the maximum. Footprint and impacts. If this project gets funded. And we move into active design and construction, we look at ways to minimize impact. Uh, by narrowing the cross section in some way or uh, shape or form to minimize. Impacts further. But at this point, we have to clear the full, consider the the environmental impacts of the full footprint.
Yeah, and 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 to to piggyback on that, one of those examples that I see is is very potential here as we show the shared use path. Uh, direct, you know, directly right next to the Mid Valley Highway in this location, there's potential that. Um, it can move further east and some alternative alignment of just the path. Which would reduce the impacts to the the business owners in this location where where the path can be. Integrated into a master community trail network. And be relocated from the business fronts that are out this location. So like like Juan was saying, there's optimal. There's design optimization, some impacts to to look at it when it gets into that design phase. And, you know, there's typical, we're at the environmental, which which shows the the largest amount of impacts.
Great, thanks both. You don't have any outstanding questions in the chat? If we haven't hit on something that you've asked and would like us to touch on that again, please go ahead and throw it in there. We've got about just over five minutes left in our time, so we absolutely want to provide that to anybody who may think of something else. Um, let's see. While we kind of wait for some additional questions to come in, I think I'll. Go back to, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Can I, can I just add on some information that your question is? That there there is funding identified in the long range plan, the new, the new. Long range plan for the what we call phase three of Mid Valley, which is from S R thirty six up to. I think it's Utah Avenue. But that that funding is in, so this is gonna get confusing. It's in phase three of the long range plan, which is. From twenty forty to twenty fifty. So there is funding identified, um, for a portion of Mid Valley in twenty forty to twenty fifty, but again, that's. That's twenty to thirty years out for funding to be allocated. The other thing that I just sort of wanted to touch on, just in case. There's some questions here is just. That, you know, typically, we don't go through an environmental process. Without having the construction funds closely related and and generally we fund. We fund a project fully by concept and then. The only time we we generally will, and then we'll split the environmental phase out separately. We generally have. All of the funds available. This this project's really different because the environmental impact statement was performed in twenty eleven. And that's when the funding for that phase was allocated, but the rest of it was cleared. And so this is sort of atypical for us to have the environmental separated from construction funding. By that twenty year gap, but it was really to try to give some certainty to people along this corridor because. It is developing fast to give some certainty to those folks of where the current alignment is shown. Does does that make sense?
Right clarification, Robert. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, this by by doing it this way, it allows the the communities to plan around the corridor instead of the corridor, kind of, you know. Trying to trying to fit in the corridor with within an existing, uh, community.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate that. Okay, not seeing any additional questions right now. I wanted to touch on a couple of things that we did mention, but put this up on the screen for everybody. And we very much appreciate your time here today. We also are holding an in-person public hearing this Thursday. That'll be from six to seven thirty P M at the Tuila City Police Department in the community room there. I mentioned that, um, you'll be able to provide formal comments at that meeting. Got some options for you there. You can provide written comments there and also verbal comments. We'll have a court reporter there that you can speak to one on one who will transcribe your comments. Or we have an opportunity for an open microphone as part of the public hearing as well. So we definitely want to hear from you at those options. This entire team will be at that meeting. And we'll have the ability to take a look at project limits on a large map. All of the information you've seen here today will also be there. Um, but the opportunity will be there as well to talk a little bit more in detail or one on one with a member of our project team. As needed. So we encourage you or your friends, family, neighbors, anybody who couldn't attend tonight to join us on Thursday if possible. And again, that comment period is open through October tenth. We are accepting comments at the in-person meeting through email, um, through our website and also via mail as needed. If you think of anything else after tonight's meeting, it looks like everybody's probably asked their questions at this point, but if something else pops up that you'd like to discuss. Again, we'd love to see you Thursday. We know that that's another night out of your week, so if it's easier, you can give us a call on our hotline. Send us an email. That information is here. Um, we're always ready and available to answer your questions or connect you with somebody who you can speak with in more detail. Um, for what you're looking for. So please don't hesitate to reach out to us at any point between now and the end of the study process. I did want to also mention that the recording of this meeting will be available on our project website. UDOT dot utah.gov forward slash midvalley, starting tomorrow morning. So if there's something you'd like to go back and take a look at or pass along to somebody who was not able to join us this week, otherwise. Um, that will be available to you via YouTube link tomorrow. So. We are just up on our time here today. If there's nothing else or no other questions, it doesn't look like anything has come in. I think we can wrap it up. Again, thank you to all of our attendees for joining us. Thank you to our panel and our presenters. Appreciate the information and the time tonight. And hope to see you or connect with you otherwise during the study going forward.